I'd like to recall to order the meeting of the Suffolk Central School Board of January 8th, 2018, uh, 2019. I know I do that. Uh, if we could please stand for the.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Kathy Starkey, um, an alum of Suffolk High School, an employee of the district, um, and a member of our community. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Maddie Nickle. I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. So Women in Sports Day, which was on January 4th, was a big success. Uh, we had coaches, students, and a lot of visitor participation. Uh, the second Suffolk Robotics Open House event was on January 5th, another big success. Uh, three schools visited and it was just a day of collaboration and working with other teams for overall improvement of all of the programs, of robots. The legendary SHS Handball Tournament is officially underway as of Monday, uh, with approximately 30 teams participating this year. This will continue during unit lunch for the next two weeks. Uh, SHS World Language Elementary Carnival, uh, will be on January 15th at 6:00 PM. It's open to students K through 12 to promote importance of world and language culture. Uh, the second SHS Winter Music Concert will be Thursday, January 10th. The SHS Panel on College Admissions will be on Jan- January 17th. Um, it's basically just a Q and A session for parents, for parents with college admissions counseling. And the Deca, Suffolk Deca Club competed in the regional competition at RCC this past Friday, January 4th. Uh, 27 students placed in the competition, which is more, pretty much more than ever, the most ever in program history. And all those students qualified for the state level competition. 19 of those students have confirmed that they will be going to Rochester in the beginning of March to compete. I myself is one of them. Chloe Barbanelle is also one of them. She's here too, as are the pair of twins. Um, so don't, so at this point donations, uh, we are collecting donations to help fund our trip. And it's more than welcome if, um, members of your community would like to donate to, you know, the success of this club and us as students. So yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. At this time, we will be adopting minutes of three, um, meetings. And if I can remind everyone to please abstain for a meeting that you have not attended. We will start with 1.08 minutes of the regular meeting on December 4th, 2018. I have a motion. Mr. Shapiro, second. Mr. McKenzie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstains? Any nays? Thank you. Minutes have been adopted. Next are minutes of the special meeting of December 6th, 2018. I believe Mr. Donley without, to remind you, um, motion.
So moved.
Mr. Shapiro, second.
Second.
Mr. McKenzie, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstains?
Abstain.
Thank you. Minutes adopted. Minutes of the special meeting of December 19th. Motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kearns. I believe Mr. Shapiro abstaining. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Any abstains?
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro, thank you. Minutes have been adopted. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Next are superintendent's comments. The recognition of Reach grant.
Yes, we have, uh, two lovely ladies here to recognize the award winners for the Reach grant. And we have a lot of members of Reach. They're a very valued partner with our school district. There's a lot of grants and a lot of money that they raise each year to support our teachers in innovative programs. And we are exceedingly appreciative of all of their efforts. And we have Gloria and Marlo here that will be announcing the award winners. And then after, if we have any of the award winners here, after all of the names are announced, we'll ask you to come forward to have your picture taken. All right, so Gloria Marlo.
Good evening. My name is Marlo Dickman. Gloria Krantz and I are here tonight on behalf of the Reach Foundation of Rockland. The Reach Foundation is a nonprofit organization that supports innovative educational and creative programs that promote leadership development, academic excellence, and community service within the Suffolk Central School District. We award grants to educators in the Suffolk Central School District, scholarships to graduating seniors of Suffolk High School, and we also organize and present the STEAM Expo, which will be this year held on Saturday, April 6th, 2019 at Suffolk High School. We would like to thank the school board for allowing us to present tonight the individual educators who were awarded grants from the Reach Foundation so that they can be recognized for their commitment to bring in creative and innovative educational approaches to their students. This year, we received a record number of applications, almost twice as many as Reach received last year. Reach increased its budget to $24,000 to support as many proposals as we could. And the Retired Teachers Association very kindly contributed an additional $1,000 to bring up the total amount of grants awarded to $25,000. We would also like to thank the Suffolk Central School District, and in particular, Sue Weber, whose depth of knowledge and experience has been an invaluable resource to us throughout this process.
In total, 46 grant applicants, applicants received funding for their proposals and grants were awarded to every school in the district. Here's a sample of the proposals funded this year. Suffolk High School students will create their own escape room challenge incorporating key components of chemistry. The winning team will present their original escape room at the Reach STEAM Expo this year. An irrigation system will be installed in the Suffolk High School Giving Garden, which donates food to community members in need. Middle school students will be incorporating steam and quilting. Sensory pathways will be placed in the hallways of two elementary schools. Many kinds of robots will be in the classrooms, including Brick Pi 3, Ozobot, Cubletz, Bluebot, B-Bot, Dash and Dot Robots. And our pre-K students will be utilizing fairy tale problem solving STEM kits. In addition, breakout EDU kits, which support problem solving skills based on the escape room concept, will be funded at each elementary school in the district. We are continually amazed and impressed by the proposals that the educators in this district bring to us during the grant program. And we will now announce the grant recipients for the 2018-2019 school year.
From Suffolk High School, Tracy Burgess, Ken Wojahowski with Colleen Anunziada and Angela Greer. From Suffolk Middle School, Gary Blake, Susan Wicks, Gail Yodowitz, and Beth Boning. From Cherry Lane Elementary, Tara Velto, Erin Murphy, Andrea Edwards, Kimberly Kavanaugh, and Nicole McKenzie. From Montebello Elementary School, Eleanor Serny and Jennifer Kangro. From Slotesburg Elementary, Dee Martin and Michelle McKirn.
From our P Connor Elementary, Patricia Lanis, Margaret Di Spazzo, Kelly Benandi, Christine Dunn, Dawn Bean, Patricia Keenan, Gina Pepe, Christina Rudinsky, Anne Biondi, Lauren Burr, Eileen Kearney, and Colleen Davis. From Zaiola Elementary, Jennifer Butler, Kathleen Klatchman, Linda Hammond, Rob Zink, Liz Rolston, Christine Kerr, Isabella Burkett, David Selly, Kathy Vitablia, Ted Zobel, Ellen Philbrick, Dawn Postolowski, Roseanne Sheddler, Vanessa Larbicas, Jessica Colian, Ellen Stone, Michael Drab, and Renee Dawson. We thank all of our grant applicants and grant recipients for their creativity and their commitment to bringing science, technology, engineering arts, and mathematic-based learning into the classroom. We invite everyone to please come see the results of the STEAM Expo this year on April 6th. And, um, if all teachers that have been named to our present would like to come forward so we can recognize and applaud them.
Any officers want to come up?
Reach people?
No.
I mentioned that there are some students from the Giving Garden who are here tonight, so we'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the great work that Reach Foundation does for Suffolk Central. Amazing, hard work pays off. We can't wait for another STEAM Expo. I understand you pushed it a month, so hopefully beautiful weather.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for everything. I understand you raised quite a bit of money. The total grants were $25,000. Incredible. I know how hard it is to raise those funds and thank you for everything you do. And thanks for our teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know the funds will be used incredibly to support our students and accentuate both their learning experience, um, make it a more fun one. So we will move on with our, um, action items. And we have action items 1.1 to 1.12. I'm sorry, public participation first? Yes. On action items only. Public participation, first period of two. I'm sorry. Uh, this is the first of two public, I'm sorry, two public participation periods. Each one not to exceed 30 minutes. Heather Campbell is our timekeeper. Uh, each person not to exceed three minutes. Please address comments to the president of the Board of Education. Uh, please refrain from discussing a specific concern regarding an individual district personnel or student, which should be presented such comments or concerns directly to the superintendent of schools during regular business hours. Uh, and remarks, um, should be up to the time and please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Susan Valaney. I am a teacher in Suffolk Central. I've been employed by the district since 1994. I am a resident of the district, proud graduate of Suffolk High School class of 1990. I have three children that attend this school, these schools, and, uh, I have a few things to say, so good evening. As for NISPA's 2017 presentation entitled, "The Responsibility of the Board of Education in School Districts Finances," a very detailed and relevant set of standards and recommendations was described. The very first of six essential steps in the process is for school boards to define a problem. Over the last few months, there seems to be an unspoken uneasiness with regards to district finances. In September, there were hurdles to the Ranco aides and monitors having their contract renewed. In November of this year, our board deliberated for hours over the Suffolk Education Association contract. We heard board members speak of sustainability, fiscal responsibility, and even had one board member make innuendo regarding closing a school. Just days ago, memorandum of agreement with regards to teachers' rate of pay were pulled from the action items on tonight's agenda. These actions, or inaction in some cases, are only highlighted by the recent hiring of an additional attorney to aid in negotiations and personnel issues. On tonight's agenda, we see a special audit engagement listed, the next step in hiring yet another firm to look at district finances. I ask you, has a problem been identified? Fiscal responsibility is an expectation every stakeholder has for the Board of Education, and NISPA recommends looking at this responsibility in a two-pronged fashion, quantitative and qualitative. Let's begin with quantitative. The New York State Comptroller's Office evaluates school districts and gives each a fiscal stress indicator. Districts can be classified as having significant or moderate fiscal stress, susceptible to fiscal stress, or no designation for these, for those school districts with no fiscal stress. Districts are given a score between zero and 100. The Suffolk Central School District consistently scores a zero with a classification of no designation since 2015. The same report compares districts surplus or deficits. Suffolk Central is listed as having 3.98% surplus compared to a 3.61% for all school districts operating at surplus, 3.15% for mid-Hudson school districts operating at surplus, and 2.89% compared to medium downstate schools operating at surplus. As you can see, Suffolk Central operating surplus is above any comparable group that also operates on surplus. Let's look at actual dollar amounts. According to the NISIT budget analysis, Suffolk Central has been operating at a budget surplus since at least the 2015-16 school year.
3 million. We'll allow you to close, Ms. Valaney. We could take the clothes.
It's, it's quite a bit, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's okay, yep. Hi. Lisa Passanetti, I teach eighth grade science at the middle school. This is my 19th year in the district. So I'm just going to pick off, uh, pick up where my colleague, Mrs. Valaney, left off. Looking at dollar amounts according to the NISIT budget analysis, Suffolk Central has been operating at a budget surplus since at least the 2015-2016 school year. In 2015-2016, the district under-projected its expenditures by approximately $1.2 million and underspent the budget by $3.2 million for a total operating surplus of close to $4.5 million. This under-projecting and underspending trend continued in both the 2016-2017 and 2017-2018 for a combined total surplus of an additional $5.6 million. Over that three-year period, it is a total sum of $10,223,949 in surplus funds. In terms of savings over the last three years, the district has consistently kept over $30 million in its restricted fund balance account. The district has also kept anywhere between $2.6 and $3.1 million in its unrestricted funds and in the amount of approximately $5.5 million in unexpected, in unexpended surplus. For the 2017-2018 school year, the district planned for a $136 million budget with approximately $133 million in revenue. To make up the difference, the district planned to use $3.1 million in unrestricted funds. The actual numbers for 2017-2018 were better than projected. The actual expenditure was approximately $135 million, 1.1 million less than projected, and the district's revenue was $134 million, approximately 1 million more than expected. In actuality, the district only used $938,716 out of the unrestricted funds to balance the 2017-2018 budget. Using this historical data, NISIT projects that Suffolk Central will close the 2018-2019 school year with an operating surplus of just over $2 million. NISPA's second approach to problem solving is a qualitative approach that looks at subjective criteria. Over the last few months, I have not heard any central office administrator express any concern over the district's ability to continue on the path of financial wellness. Knowing that many economic factors are in flux each year, teacher retirements, increased student needs that require additional staff, interest rates, state aid, our central office staff continuously ensures the Board of Education and the public that we are in good shape and that our current tax base can support the needs of the district. With such a conservative spending history, I see no reason to doubt the veracity of such statements. And so I ask the school board to please define the problem. At the last meeting, a member of the public implored school board members to specifically say what their concerns were to back their vote to hire an outside auditor. She asked board members to let the public know where they stand to help the public understand the special audit engagement to justify the use of taxpayer funds.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Kristi De Souza, Suffolk High School. After the public participation section, the board of president moved to the action item at hand. If you watch the video, you will see the president move directly to a vote, skipping over the discussion of the item in total disregard for the question, for the request made during public participation. Finally, a discussion did occur at the insistence of another board member. I cannot say that I walked away from that conversation knowing what the financial emergency is, why a special meeting had to be called to address this non-emergency, and I surely did not feel I understood the necessity of another auditor. And so I ask again, please explain the need to use additional taxpayer funds for this audit. Without a defined problem on the table, I ask the Board of Education to take another look at the special audit engagement and rethink the necessity for this expenditure. If there is an issue lurking in the darkness, please bring it to the light. Because for now, all the public sees is the numbers on the state comptroller site and the NISIT audit, and those numbers paint a very different picture than the ones painted by the Board of Education. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing there are none, we will close this segment and move on to, uh, action items. Action items are 2.01 to 2.02. Any items at all? 2.8, I think you need 2.04. To 2.04, thank you. Unintended?
No.
No, unintended. Okay, space is up. And are you pulling any items?
Two.
Okay. 2.04 is full. And I will pull 2.05 just for clarification as well. It's a map today so that we could come up with a resolution for the national conference. I'd like to call a consent agenda for all items except 2.04 and 2.05. Motion? Mr. McKenzie, second.
Second.
Mr. Kearns, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstains? Any nays? Motions 2.01 to 2.03 and 2.06 to 2.14 have passed. Motion 2.04 is on the floor, need a motion.
So moved.
Shapiro, second.
Second.
Mr. Kearns, discussion. All right, so, um, really quickly, um, this is identical to the motion that, um, passed, um, two weeks ago. The intent is to, um, the business office advised that, um, there was no, um, response to the RFP posted and requested that the board make the decision if we would like to re-advertise the post. And so the wording is identical to the wording from, uh, the December meeting. So being there are no discussions, no questions, we will, um, vote on the motion.
All those.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstains? Motion passes, thank you. 2.05. 2.05 is regarding attendance at the National School Board Association's conference in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. So Dr. Adams provided, uh, some school board budget numbers that we received, um, after the last meeting, and everybody's had a chance to look at them. Uh, we need a motion on the floor to start the discussion. I'm sorry, what?
Has there been a motion made for that?
No, that's why I'm saying I need a motion. That's what I was saying at the same moment, when guys aren't paying attention. Motion? Thank you. I thought you were paying attention. Second. Okay, Mr. Kearns, Mr. McKenzie, and discussion. So I'll give a little briefing and then I'll open it for any discussion questions. So basically, we looked at the numbers Dr. Adams provided. It looks like the travel budget for the Board of Education, given a prior year transfer that you advised this off, um, at the last meeting, um, provides, um, available balance for travel of $4,658.64. So the cost for the National School Board Association Conference, uh, most of it lies in the registration. The registration is extremely high. And the reason we have this for vote today is registration rates will change on January, as of January 11th. So we need to make, um, our, our vote today of not necessarily who's going, but how many people, uh, the board will be, um, represented by. So, um, registrational loan is 935 per person. Uh, after January 11th, the rate goes up. Uh, we did an average of hotel stays and it's in that 220 to 250 per night. Uh, the total location at the conference is three nights. So roughly, um, it's obviously a car drive as opposed to flight. Um, so roughly, the cost would be about 2,000 per person, including other expenses that are approved. Um, so we are going to vote today to send two individuals to the national conference. We will leave, um, your input of who would like to attend by the 10th at the, at the latest so that we can, um, register before the rate goes up. So, uh, any further discussion?
I had some questions about the expenses that were charged to the Board of Education Budget Unit. Marshall and Sterling were one of those expenditures that came out, and it was for statute concerning Affordable Care Act. This is the Board of Education Budget Unit. Same thing for WageWorks, they administer our Deferred Compensation Flex Plan. Um, they administer our 403B plan, Panamora, the, uh, cost of yearbooks for the Board of Ed. Um, the, the amount that's there for the expense is $1,140, and the yearbooks each are $80, so I don't know how that calculates. And also Star Press of Pearl River is the cost of the new newsletters that are mailed out to the public. All of these expenses that are charged within the budget unit of the Board of Education don't have anything to do with the Board of Education because we're not, we don't get benefits. We're not in the 403D, we're not in the deferred comp. The yearbooks for the Board of Ed is seven times 80, which is like $560. And the, um, Star Press of Pearl River, the cost of the newsletters. And the Star Press of Pearl River, the cost of the newsletters that are mailed out to the public, it's not really a board publication, it's the whole school district. So, I mean, like that, I could see it's, I mean, I don't really have a big problem with that, but I don't understand why these other things are being charged out of that Budget Unit.
So that's really a district overall cost, and that's where we put it, because it's a cost for all the members of the district that work for the district. The budget newsletter goes to all the district. The panorama, there's probably Board of Ed, but it's also district, we might hold some, I don't know the details, but you get it for the board, we probably hold a few copies here for whatever reason we do that. So it's not just a Board Ed code, it's kind of a district code. As far as changing that, we could move it to another code, it doesn't matter, but of course, the budget would move with it.
Correct.
I mean, but there's no real, I mean, why we put it there is because it's, we take that code as district, not so much just Board of Education.
Okay, it's just named Board of Ed.
Right, because we were trying to give you the idea of what's charged within your function. So it doesn't matter to me, we could change it to another one thousand code, it doesn't affect our stating, it doesn't, it just affects where we put it on the expense, but of course, the budget would move with it. So it doesn't matter to me, that's how we've always done it, that's how many other districts do it.
What I was concerned is that if you're looking at the costs for, for, you know, for the personnel costs, you're not having those costs included with personnel costs, because you're putting them in a different Budget Unit and not putting them where they really are for the benefit of.
We can move it there, it doesn't matter, we've always looked at it as a district cost and not so much as a all personnel, it's benefit, I guess some of that could go there, but there's other things involved, you know, like the ACA involves health care, but that also involves the whole W two and making sure the hours are worked right, so it's a kind of accounting function in some way. So it doesn't matter to me, we can move it, there's no difference, you know, how we report it, it's just a different line on the expenditures of the state reporting, but again, the budget would move with it. So we just thought, and we've always done it, and like I said, other school districts do it, because it's just an easy place for people to recognize where it is. And now, and if we move it, just so you know, you're gonna see these swings in your budget and your expenditure, you're like, oh, what happened to that? So we can move it, but it, you know, I don't care either way, no big deal, but.
And I'm sure that the Budget Units that you would move it to wouldn't have like huge, I mean, it's only like for Marshall and Sterling, for the Affordable Care Act is only sixteen thousand dollars. I'm sure if you move that into another Budget Unit where it's really showing who it's benefiting, I mean, that's for all the employees who are on the healthcare, it's just putting your expenses where they really belong.
It doesn't matter, we could do it that way, it doesn't actually make sense. As far as the panorama, I think that's a district expense, and most of that expense is definitely the Board of Education. And the district newsletter, I think that's where it belongs, it's a district newsletter, and everyone gets it.
Yeah, like I said.
You want me to do some of those other benefits? I can, it's not a big deal, but again.
Because then it's really putting it where it really belongs.
We'll do a budget transfer and we'll do a expense transfer.
Great, thank you.
Just a matter of discussion, that has to be voted on by the board, because it's a rule or something.
Well, I will. So you can do a, I'll do a board transfer, and then you can decide what you actually want to move.
Okay.
I won't do any expense transfers until you make a board transfer the next week.
Right.
And if you didn't want to move it, what you could do is just budget for it in the next budget.
We can do that too.
Yeah, like leave the current year as is and moving forward, that's something we can discuss further, and so either committee can make a recommendation and a board can make decisions.
So do you want me to do the transfer for the next week?
I think, I think we should.
Why don't I do the transfer, then you can decide at that point, okay?
But I have a problem with the theory.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Any abstains?
Abstaining.
Abstaining on the national conference?
Abstaining on the discussion.
No.
National conference. It really doesn't matter, since we're gonna be sending people, so it's fine, just abstain.
The motion is that the Board of Education move to approve the attendance of two board members at the National School Board Association Conference in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on March thirtieth to April first, two thousand nineteen, limiting expenses to three nights of hotel, stay, mileage and meals limited per the GSA rates for Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of what we're doing. Mr. Shapiro?
You abstain.
Any nays? Motion passes, thank you. Dr. Adams?
On, the next time on the board agenda are the administrative reports. However, we have two guests with us this evening, one from the, that's from the town Ramapo, and a gentleman, is Alex still here? No, okay, so he got off to Albany, but Mr. Shedler is going to, with the board's approval, discuss a little bit about the utility bill. Procedurally, under policy two thousand three hundred and fifty, the board is permitted to change the order of the agenda. And since this is out of order, the board would need to make a motion and affirmatively vote to change the order, so Mr. Shedler will be able to speak at this time, and then we can delay Andy and Anthony for an hour or two, it's about an hour, right? So procedurally, that's what we're doing, and we're following policy, so take a motion to change the order of the meeting at this time.
So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to change the order of the agenda from the agenda that has been posted to move the discussion item prior to information items. Motion? Ms. Reamer, second.
Second.
Mr. McKenzie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? None? Any abstains? None. Okay, Mr. Shedler. Thank you for your patience.
First, I would like to thank you for passing that motion.
I apologize, I have a correction, Dr. Adams alerted me before administrative reports.
Good evening, my name is Scott Shedler, I'm the assessor for the town Ramapo, and tonight I'm coming to you both as a, someone who graduated from Suffolk High School, as well as someone who had children in Suffolk High School, as well as your assessor, the town assessor, as well as the New York State Assessors Association Vice President. I'm here this evening at the request of the board to explain some issues related to real property tax laws, and how possible changes may not only impact Suffolk Central District, but taxpayers throughout the entire state of New York. Currently, there's a proposal in the governor's office that will change how certain utility properties are valued. Currently, my office values the properties, and then they're placed on the wall and the taxpayer pays the taxes. Under a proposed change, New York State will create what's called a ceiling exemption. So what will happen is, if I assess a property at a million dollars, the state of New York will create a ceiling, a maximum amount that we can assess the property. And for example purposes, what's happening is, if I assess the property at a million dollars, the state could establish a ceiling of fifty thousand dollars. What this translates to is approximately a ninety-five percent tax exemption for certain utility properties. How does it impact us? It impacts us tremendously. We pay over ten million dollars in this class of property for the taxpayers within Suffolk Central School District. We could see a possible thirty to forty percent shift that gets put on to the remaining taxpayers, and which are majority homeowners like ourselves. So we're advising you to, as you have, is to get involved in this process of opposing this legislation that's out there. It's a fairly technical process, and what we really want you to do is to oppose it. Now, I want to thank you, first of all, I want to thank the school board has passed a moralizing resolution opposing it. Ellen Jaffe, our Assemblywoman, has passed, has put a letter in opposing it, as well as Senator Carlucci and other assembly persons in the region. So the town Ramapo has allowed me to put together a team of experts that are well-known throughout the state to oppose this, and we have retained a lobbyist, Alex Beckey with Brown and Winrad, one of the premier lobbyist firms in Albany, to help us defeat this possible legislation. So we're hoping together, we can work together and really oppose this legislation. My job is to keep you guys posted on what's going on, this is a critical issue for us, and we're hoping we can rally as a community together and fight this proposed legislation, because the motto is, once a mountain, always a mountain. I want to thank you again, and also add that the county legislature, which I spoke before, I spoke a couple of weeks ago, just passed a resolution, and I met with Westchester County today. So once again, thank you for allowing me to present this brief discussion on this, which could be really a technical process, we're hoping that you can all rally behind us.
So if you don't mind, I'll open the floor for a court number of questions.
So I just wanted to ask a quick question. So what would that do to our school tax base if that was to be passed?
That's a great question. Right now, you bring about just through school tax, over six million dollars from this class of property. So if it's reduced by thirty to forty percent, that amount gets shifted onto remaining taxpayers.
And I understand there's time limitations for this advocacy to take place before the state budget is finalized, correct?
Yes, we've been advocating this issue even before it was presented, and right now, the governor will be putting out a budget within the next fifteen days. So we're hoping right now, we're advocating right now statewide that it's not included in the budget. If it's included in the budget, we're gonna advocate to all our local assembly people and senators that we need this removed from the budget, or we don't want them to vote for the budget. And if we can get, if it is put in the budget, and it is removed from the budget, then we want to advocate to our leaders that we don't want to have any type of legislation passed. So it would be really important, any community groups, however small or large they may be, to get engaged as soon as possible.
So our volunteer organizations and our teachers' unions and other unions in the district, as well as the advocacy committee representing the Board of Education, PTA, all those groups need to come into action, because we have a very brief window of time to get this off the budget for the two thousand nineteen state budget. And to refer to the resolution that the Board of Education has passed, it was, it's attached to the minutes of October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting, so you can read the resolution there, you could get some of the wording, we're probably gonna post something right on the district face page, so that, because now is a critical time. Thank you so much for actually alerting us to this issue. Other districts were not aware of it, we're actually alerting other districts in the county and across the Hudson Valley to this issue that will affect many districts. Thank you.
Wait, I had a question.
Sure.
Scott, I asked you before that this three million or two million eight or two million five, if it is thirty or forty percent decrease in our tax, that's gonna go on to the taxpayer. That is, I don't know if you know this answer, or maybe tell Anthony you know, if the tax cap will see, so that's another thing that goes against the tax cap.
No, I just saw, it wouldn't have any impact on the tax cap, so even if you raise, even if taxes go up one or two percent to the tax cap, this would be above and beyond that. So homeowners would notice this plus what you normally need to.
But it's still a big tax increase in addition to the tax.
Yeah, I was kind of, we've had previous discussion, not all districts are as impacted as Suffolk, we have corollary, so this could, we sometimes you put it in a big budget, a lot of things, you know, kind of passed before, people have a lot of time to kind of review it. But not every, we're kind of unique, and there are other districts like us, but across the state, there are a lot who have no, not as great an impact, it could easily just kind of fly by.
So even, even our taxpayers within the school district and the town should really, you know, write to their people to let them know, like, you know, Ellen Jaffe and everybody else, I mean, like, we all need to get involved, because we're all taxpayers. So we need to make sure that somebody is looking at our interests and make sure that people know that we care, and that they don't just pass this in the budget in April and just say, okay, now everybody's gonna have, you know, much larger tax increases. Thank you.
So in the past, we've put together a letter that people could just copy and send to the legislators, legislators, as well as the governor's office, and we're gonna work on putting something very quickly. Any other questions? Thank you very, very much.
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Thanks for your patience.
Hi, everyone, my name is Andy Chon, I'm the athletic director for Suffolk Central. I'm Mr. Teresa Soly. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to review participation numbers and budget for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Okay, so these are all our teams, in total, we have eighty boys and girls, modified freshman, JV, and varsity teams. We've had no changes in any teams from the two thousand sixteen, seventeen year to this year, we offered all the same teams, all the same programs. There are some programs, we have more teams, for example, if you look at basketball here, okay, we have two modified, two freshmen, two JV, and two varsity, for a total of eight teams in that program. Other programs, like bowling, for example, we only have the girls and boys varsity. So I'll give you another thirty seconds just to look at the, all the teams that we have. Again, we have eighty teams in total. Okay, now, here are our participation numbers, broken down by gender, level, and sport. In each column, if you look at the number on the left, that's our student participation number, and the number on the right, the smaller number, is our number of coaches that we have assigned to that team. So if you look up here, we have baseball, boys modified, we have nineteen players, one coach, fourteen at JV, a freshman with one coach, sixteen at JV with one coach, seventeen boys on varsity baseball team, and they have two coaches, for a total of five coaches in the program, and sixty-six baseball players at all four levels total. All right? There are some shared coaches in some programs, if you look right above Monty's head there, oh, you mind? So track and field, we have three.
Laser.
So you can see where I was pointing. We have fifty-nine in boys, seventy-two girls on the track and field modified, we have three coaches that are assigned to both groups, so instead of repeating the three, it just says same on the right here, because it's the same three coaches, and then when you go to the tally, just above Mr. Donnelly's head here, you have eight coaches total instead of eleven. Okay, so that's why that reads that we have three coaches, however, all of these students have the modified track and field, and it adds up to a total of eight coaches for that program. Okay, and then at the bottom, of course, are our total numbers, all right, for JV boys, if you look at it here, last year, we had four hundred ninety-eight varsity girls participate, we had four hundred fifty-five boys participate in varsity level, and then the numbers change at JV, one hundred seventy-nine boys as to one hundred and twelve girls. You may also take note, there are more JV teams for the boys side, and also, when you have sports like football, that tends to unbalance the numbers a little bit, because there isn't a female equivalent sport to football that carries thirty-six players. Typically, they're all in the low twenties or high teens.
And wrestling.
And wrestling, right, exactly. So we have wrestling here at the bottom at thirty, so again, that's a higher number than you're gonna find on pretty much any of the sports on the girls' side. Any questions about this one? No?
Our numbers are very, pretty steady.
Pretty steady, yeah, I'll go with a little more detail later on. Okay, so these are expenses, as I told you, may, taking a minute to talk a little bit about this, our coaching salaries is by far our biggest expense, transportation, bus and four hundred thousand, slightly over. Our BOC's fee, about ninety thousand dollars goes towards all the officials for all our home events, and that covers all eighty teams and all their games. And then the other, approximately thirty thousand goes towards office fees dues that we have to pay to Southwest Chester BOCs, and for that cost, they're the ones that do all our schedules, minus a couple of games at the varsity JV level, but they provide the bulk of all our schedules for all of our eighty teams. And they also assign all the officials to all our teams, also respecting if we have any non-preferred officials or games that we don't particularly want, they also honor those requests. And of course, we have an executive director, an assistant executive director that provide kind of like counsel, if we need advice, or some of the athletic directors are not sure about certain rules, we need interpretations. about certain rules or need interpretations, and also to rule on certain things and sit on certain committees. So, that's where that additional money from the BOCs fee goes. Our equipment supplies, all right, so this basically covers your football helmets, your baseball helmets, your softball bats, anything we need for the field. If I have to buy foul poles or new basketball rims or anything of that nature, all of those types of items go into this here. Our rental fee is mostly our ice hockey rental fee for Sportorama, which is expensive, but per pupil, not our most expensive sport. And I will mention that the Hockey Booster Club also chips in a substantial amount of money to cover the rental fee to keep hockey going. Our reconditioning and service, this is mostly reconditioning of equipment for contact sports. Football's the biggest one. That's where one of our biggest football expenses are in reconditioning. We have to send every helmet back. Every year, it has to be reevaluated, and it has to be tested. Typically, we'll have anywhere from five to 15 helmets rejected at the end of the season, and we'll have to buy more if we anticipate that our participation numbers are going to stay steady. Also, football pads, things of that nature. We reconditioned some of the hockey equipment, and also softball and baseball. So, that's where this goes. Entry fees, $17,000. Everything that we enter, any kind of tournament for any sport, comes out of that line. The biggest expenditures are typically in track, wrestling, cross country, and a few other sports that enter tournaments. So, basically, especially your individual tournaments, gymnastics also, bowling, anything that we have to enter a tournament, we have to pay a fee, comes out of that line. Okay, other is just kind of miscellaneous.
Travel mostly.
Okay.
Travel development.
Right. Membership dues, $9,000. Some membership dues are a little more expensive. Example, crew tends to pick up more membership dues. We have to join the Hudson Valley Rowing League. There's certain amount of leagues that we have to join for crews that they can have the facilities to go and compete because they don't have the facilities locally. And other things, membership dues, almost every varsity coach is expected to pay dues into their coaches' association for Section 1. And out of that money for the coaches' association, they'll typically pay for awards at the end of the year, for Section 1 Player of the Year, Section 1 Coach of the Year, the banquets at the end of the year, for all section banquets. So, all those are for all your top athletes in every sport throughout Section 1. If you don't know, Section 1 is Rockland, Westchester, Duchess, and Putnam County schools. There's approximately 80 high schools that compete in Section 1 and inter-scholastic athletics.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, this is the same thing, just based on pie charts. So, you can see again, 52% is our coaching salaries, 26% transportation, everything else is substantially less. Those are by far our two biggest expenditures in athletics. Okay, now, this is broken down by sport. Now, you'll see in the next slide that we also break it down per pupil, which then changes the order of what's most expensive. Okay, so basketball right now is our biggest expense, but if you look at it, we have eight teams that play close to 150 games. So, when you play that many games, it's a lot of busing fees, it's a lot of officials' fees. For a home basketball game, we're required to have a person on the shot clock, a person on the scorebook, a person on the scoreboard, and then we usually have two, at least two people on general election duty because we get bigger crowds at those games. So, that's why you'll see a bigger expense overall with basketball. If you look at some of our others, golf, $67,000. Might seem like a lot, but we have to pay more for transportation there. They get transported to Scoop Rock almost daily for practices or any other places they have to go. When there's snow on the ground, we'll get a certificate of insurance, and maybe we'll go to Old Tappan or a couple of other venues to make sure they can swing a club until the snow melts. Okay, so that's where we are with that. And then cheerleading's the least expensive because even though we are now a varsity competitive cheerleading program, thanks to certainly to Jenny Oleen, one of our most recent coaches, and now DJ Hopkins, they are competing in the winter, but even with that, they don't compete in the fall. So, there's a lot less traveling with that. So, again, transportation, and they don't compete much in the winter because there's not many things to go to. They only have two, three, maybe four competitions to go to, while wrestling might have, you know, eight to 10 tournaments, and five to six dual meets, section tournament, division tournament, and so on. So, obviously, they'll be a lot higher because there's a lot more transportation. Any questions about this slide? Okay. Now, this is broken down by students, so you can see the order changes. So, you might say, "Well, wow, why is bowling so expensive? I don't understand that. There's only 15 kids." But we have to transport them to the alleys. We use three different alleys, one in Montville, one in Hittor over in North Garnaville and over in the North Rockland District, and then one in New City. So, we have to transport them to every practice and transport them to every game. So, their transportation fee gets very high. We only have one coach in the program, but that's really why per student, their cost takes a little bit of a jump. Okay? Ice hockey, again, because of the rental fee we have to pay. And again, the Booster Club chips in a substantial amount of money to buy hockey afloat, and a lot of people in that organization were very hard to keep hockey strong. And now, if you didn't know, we're currently ranked number two in the state. And then, again, you look at golf, okay, we don't have that many participants, but again, we have to transport them to practice, and that along with skiing, which is down here, again, jumps that cost per student a little bit. Okay? The other thing I want to mention, when you go back to the other slide, $20,000 is somewhat of the magic number in athletics. You can't really run a team for less than $20,000. So, even though, yes, again, bowling seems kind of expensive, I don't think we can, there's very few programs we could add or run for less than $20,000. And again, the only reason cheers down here is because they go to very few competitions because they don't compete in the fall, and there are very few competitions in the spring. Okay, so back again to this slide, so again, cost per student, again, bowling. When I first got here, there were a couple of sports that were up around $2,400, $2,500. So, we have been able to get that cost down a little bit. And then, the average cost per student at the bottom right here, $826.
Which is actually down from last year. Andy does a very good job. How long you been here now?
Seven years.
Seven years, and the first year, we beat him over the head with trying to lower costs. And he's done a really good job, and obviously has a very good understanding of the numbers.
Thank you, Theresa. You did a good job, Mark.
Okay. Okay, any questions on this slide?
Okay. Here's our breakdown of participation numbers. So, we're 52.7% male, 47.3% female. Seven years ago, we were at about 58, 42. We've made some strides to get back in this direction. We added, four years ago, a girls' basketball team to our program, and so we balanced it out, so there were four on each side. We started off with a second modified team, and then transitioned that to a freshman girls' basketball, so it mirrors the boys' side. We did also, when we made cuts a few years back, we cut two JV B teams that were boys' teams, of course, into soccer and boys' lacrosse. They still, both programs are carrying four teams. At that time, they were the only programs carrying five teams. So, there were some tough decisions to be made when we were making some budget cuts back then, so that's how that worked out. Hopefully, Women's Sports Day will again help to boost our participation. That was last Friday. I did feel it was a successful event, and we'll keep building on it for next year. Any questions about this? Okay, so this is the change from the year before. The male participation is down six students, which is not a substantial percentage. The female percentage is up 40, and again, we have been trending in that direction. What happened there? Is Eric? Okay. So, here's our team accomplishments for last year. We had seven league and county champions. We had a few teams, varsity teams, we knocked off in the section finals, but didn't have any section champions last year. 31 varsity teams earned the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team Award. This past year in the fall, every single, all 11 of our varsity teams earned the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team Award. So, of course, one of our department goals is to have every team earn it. It's not going to be an easy task, but we're going to do the best that we can. We're trying to take some steps towards earning that. We now have an eligibility policy where the teachers, about every month or so, get updated rosters, and they can report any students that are not passing their class. We call them down once a week. We make sure that they get a study hour in, and that they report their average at the end of that week, and their teacher has the income as to whether they're showing improvement or not. If they're showing improvement, they remain on academic probation, but they can still participate. If they don't show improvement eventually, they're either suspended or removed from the team. So, we're trying to take some steps to get everybody's average up. We're also now doing a attendance report. So, every varsity JV and freshman coach gets a daily attendance report at about 2:00 from Mrs. Tibson, who works very hard, our athletic secretary, to get that done. She goes into E-school, she takes out the attendance report, they're grouped by team. She emails it to the coach, and when the coach starts practice, he can pull it up on his or her phone and know exactly who was late to school, who missed school, who missed certain periods of school. And I mean, I can't tell you with statistics at this point, we've only been doing it for about a year, but I can assure you, it's definitely helped with our teams and lateness to school, and getting our athletes to keep up with their academic rigor and what's expected of them. Also, last year, in seven years I've been here, we've not had this. We had eight teams win JV county championships. So, these are all the teams listed, and we're hoping that translates into some more varsity successes here. And here's our individual accomplishments. We had four junior scholar athletes this week. This year so far, we've had two, including Matt Nickpon, who spoke at the beginning of the meeting tonight. We had one overall Rockland County athlete of the season, that was Jack, I'm sorry, that was Nick Sumillo. Three Rockland County athletes of the season for their individual sport. Five national finalists, three all-state, 29 all-section athletes, 40 first-team all-county, 145 all-league athletes. Last year, niche.com ranked, this is the ninth best school in New York State for athletes in 10 in 2017-2018. There are over 700 high schools in the state. This follows the year before. 2014 and '15 was a real banner year for athletics, where we had a state championship team volleyball, second in state in girls' lacrosse, third in the state in cross-country. Wrestling were section champs, ball and volleyball were section champs, hockey took second in the section. It was a real banner year for us in 2015. So, we were actually ranked first in the state overall for female athletics, and fourth in the state overall for our entire athletics program. Okay, so this ranking follows it. It's a little bit of a dip. This was a hard pace to keep up with, but we're having a good year so far this year, so hopefully, we'll keep up. Any questions? Okay, thanks, everyone.
We appreciate the administration's support to athletes and athletics in our district, definitely our coaching staff, who work very hard with our students, and the support of the students' families and parents is very important, and those of us whose kids have played sports know, which we'd like to do as well. Thank you, Andy and Theresa. Thank you very much. Mr. Kishan?
And just any working off of, I know in your packet, you have one-page budget calendar. It's a little different this year, and the idea of putting the calendar in front of you is because we know it's going to be a slightly different year, primarily due to the fact that we expect the tax cap to come in a lot higher than we might have seen in the past. Because of the drop in our building aid, just when you work through the mathematics of it, our tax cap is going to be, again, we expect to be higher than what you've seen in the past. So, clearly, we want to get some guidance. It's February 5. We don't have all the data right now that we need to give you, what that figure is going to come out at. We expect to get that through the governor's proposal and the CPI data we're going to get from the state this month. We'll be able to, by the February 5 meeting, tell you what that number is. And really, that's the meeting that we've never really had before, where we're going to kind of say, before, we present a budget to you. Let's have a general discussion within this. First, where would you like to, you know, is that, where would you like to come in at? Is there, what's a general direction you'd like to see? Would you like to amend less, or amend half of that number? Whatever the board, that guidance will help us basically put a budget together that ultimately, you're the ones that present it to the community. It becomes an administrative budget, but ultimately, it's a board's budget. And also, we gave you the parameters of what we need to do to meet all the requirements time-wise without adding any more meetings to what you already have around your schedule. So, there would be that February 5 meeting, there would be four other meetings, which again, we can decide how you want to proceed this year with those meetings. And we can still meet all our timeframes, ultimately leaving an election day of May 21st. So, again, you might not have seen this specifically in front of the board in the past because we didn't expect, it's obviously your board, it's, we know it's going to be a different numbers this year, and we are looking for your guidance because ultimately, this is your budget. And we work for you, and we want to bring in things along the lines of what you like. So, really, it's that February 5 meeting, which gives you about a month to kind of, and we'll get you the data before, once we have it, we'll get it to you. But it kind of gives you some, maybe some time to decide, you know, we have seasoned board members, we have new board members. Do you want us to do it exactly as we have in the past? Would you like to see certain areas highlighted? With, you know, really, that's what we're kind of looking for with this. And it'll also give us a little time to do what we need to do internally to have our meetings and bringing that budget for the, so outside of the February 5 meeting, which would be kind of parameters, big picture, the first kind of going through specific numbers, specific data, would probably be the March 5 meeting for this calendar. Still allowing for four meetings.
So, last year, we had four instead of five.
I think, yeah, and the fourth one was really an adoption. There really wasn't, this is actually more, yeah.
This is two.
Well, this is, this is, it depends how you look at it. Could be viewed as five because that February 5 meeting never existed.
Right.
And a pre-meeting, you know, with some general parameters, like, here's the tax cap, here's how much we get from the state, you know, you're the voice of the community. Let us know, you know, where you want to see this budget coming in at in this way. Instead of giving you something and then kind of having, you know, push back forth as far as what is it you're looking for, we'd rather just have that discussion upfront, and that, and then still, you would guide the budget process.
Is there a way between here and February 5 being that by then, you want some feedback that we may have some numbers forwarded that board members can give feedback on?
We should have the tax cap info right up the governor's budget, and then we're just waiting for the CPI data. So, I'm expecting by, as Scott had mentioned, yeah, eight days, or four, three to four weeks of the governor's budget's gone. So, probably by the 20s of January, we'll be able to get you what the tax cap is, what our state aid is looking like for the next year, and that would kind of be the preface for that discussion. And then, a week or two, yeah, and then February 5, it's really wherever you want to go.
Also, with the tax cap information, if you can also give for the building fund that's bringing that tax cap up, say it brings it up 2%, how much would we have to raise in taxes for that building fund, and how much is that for, you know, within the budget? How much is that within the tax cap?
We could do a good thing without, you know, show it to you what it is. If we don't, we do building aid, and we have the drop in building aid, and then we get away.
If you're going to give it without the building fund.
You're saying you want the amount. So, basically, we could show you what it would be if we weren't having a significant drop in building aid. So, you will know what the building aid, what the building aid burden is on the taxpayers if we decide to do it that way. Right?
But you don't really have a choice. I mean, you don't have the building aid, so you have, you're allowed to collect more, so that's why your tax cap is going up. But you're going to be using that portion of the tax cap.
Not necessarily, because as we've spoken, I'm sorry, I should be standing up. Not necessarily, because as we've spoken before, we have reserves, including a debt service reserve that we've been planning for several years that we could use to offset this drop in building aid. So, it shouldn't be, you know, that's your decision, whether you want to use that reserve that we put aside to use, and how much of the reserve that you put aside.
One-six, and our original plan was to do it in two tranches. There's one drop this year in building aid, and there's another drop a few years from now. So, we have two kind of step downs, and then that becomes the new normal.
So, it's really like $800,000.
We were thinking 1-1 and 500 was originally how we were going to use them.
But we could also change our taxes, how we're doing the funding act. We talked about that, we're funding at 100%. We have to do that to keep the tax level lower. That's what we'll do. That's your decision, but we're going to show you the numbers.
If you're using that, that fund balance or the reserve, you're creating a hole for the following year because now you haven't collected those taxes, so now you have to use something else for the following year because that's now a hole, and that hole keeps following you.
Not necessarily, because if you go look at the whole plan, the debt starts to reduce to, after a few years, the debt goes down and matches better with the building aid.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so that's, but we have like a three or four-year period where those two numbers are not going to be exact.
They have to be phased in.
Yeah, so that's, so if this is, if we don't go ahead and after tonight, that we can go ahead with this plan, then that'll help us do our work.
Okay, Gary, are you comfortable with this? And the more presentations, the more I guess to discuss them.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, and it's probably a stupid question that needed people know. The April 20th property tax report card must be submitted to SED. What exactly is that? Is that like, you know, comparing? Is that like, you know, comparing or?
Yeah, so it's the tax levies, both years, the budget growth, the enrollments. Like, we can actually provide, you know, in the next few weeks, what that looked like last year.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
And that's why you have to vote when you have to put the budget because we have to get that in the next day basically to the state.
Yeah, so we're telling the sixteen, last meeting, twentieth, we have to get that up to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Kishan, I'm Mrs. Ollion, thank you very much. Public comments on non-agenda items.
My name is Sarah Kern. I'm a parent in the district and a Southern Central employee. I'm also married to a board, a member of the Board of Ed. I contemplated long and hard about speaking tonight after the last board meeting, which can be fairly described as emotional. My goal in life is to make positive impact on the lives of my family, my students, and my community, and as such, I couldn't ignore some of the recent statements and actions that have occurred in this boardroom. And I seek to list some facts in an effort to help the public come to their own conclusions. Board of Ed policy twelve thirty allows each speaker three minutes during public participation. Please note, July tenth, at the thirty-four minute five second mark, a speaker was allowed three minutes fifty-eight seconds. On August ninth, at the ten minute thirteen second mark, a speaker was allowed seven minutes seven seconds. At the seventeen minute fifty-six second mark, a speaker was allowed five minutes forty-six seconds. At the twenty-four minutes six second mark, a speaker was allowed four minutes four seconds. That same speaker returned later during the same public participation session and spoke for an additional two minutes for a total of six minutes four seconds. At the twenty-eight minute thirty second mark, a speaker was allowed five minutes forty-one seconds. On August twenty-first, at the fifty-eight minute mark, a speaker was allowed four minutes twenty-six seconds. On September seventeenth, at the two hour twelve minute thirty second mark, a speaker was allowed four minutes. Two hours eighteen minute fifty-one second mark, speaker allowed five minutes forty-seven seconds. Two hour twenty-nine minute twenty-one second mark, a speaker allowed three minutes thirty seconds. I might add, at the two hour twenty-four minute twenty-nine second mark, the president of the Aids and monitors union was caught off after three minutes. On December fourth, at the six minute fifty-two second mark, a speaker was allowed three minutes forty-two seconds, was signaled to stop, that speaker was allowed additional ten seconds. A second individual allowed, was allowed three minutes thirty seconds, then was given an additional thirty seconds to finish her thought. On December sixth, speaker was allowed four minutes four seconds, and the speaker was then given an additional thirty seconds. On December ninth, I was stopped after three minutes four seconds and was not allowed to finish my comments. On December nineteenth, the president of the board said in public, and I quote, "I hope when I am no longer on the Board of Ed and I get up at this mic, should I feel compelled to do so, that you interrupt me at three minutes like everyone else." After the meeting, the board president approached me explaining that everyone is stopped at the three-minute mark. I became impassioned at that moment due to the audacity of that statement. To summarize, during the fifteen meetings held between July and December two thousand and eighteen, there were thirteen instances where members of the public spoke beyond three minutes, and only twice was that person interrupted and not allowed to finish their thoughts. I am one of those two people. There is no room for untruths in this room. At a time when the district is at a crossroad, when most decisions are met with vehement opinions both for and against, it is of the utmost importance that every word spoken by members of the board be honest and true. If the public cannot trust a seemingly insignificant statement regarding how long people have been permitted to share their thoughts during public session, how are we to trust anything else?
Go back to follow. Good evening, my name is Andrea Jacking. I hope you give me my three minutes. I'm a taxpayer in the district. I'm here today to read a letter that was received by a total request from the State Education Department, Renee L. Ryder, Associate Commissioner. I'm not in the habit of reading other people's mail, but this was actually written to Dr. Douglas Adams regards the transportation issue that I've spoken about in the past. Dear Superintendent, and I'm going to read the highlights because it's a four-page letter and that's not going to fit into the minutes. Dear Superintendent Adams, this letter comes in response to multiple concerns expressed by parents of the non-public school students who reside within the Southern Central School District. Specifically, parents have reported that SESD has not been meeting its obligations to provide various services to non-public school students, including transportation services and appropriate services for students with disabilities. The State Education Department is committed to providing equitable education opportunities to every student in every school in New York, so these reports are troubling. I would like to take this opportunity to remind you of SESD's legal obligation to provide certain services to students enrolled in non-public schools within the district boundaries. I'm taking care of the area of transportation. Early dismissals. My office received reports that on several days during both the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen and twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school years, SESD schools closed early due to inclement weather, but transportation home was not provided for resident students who attend non-public schools. These reports also indicated that SESD had in at least one circumstance failed to notify the non-public schools of the decision not to transport the students home, which created a serious risk of harm to children as parents were not aware that bussing would not be provided. SESD is obligated to provide transportation home from school for all the children who reside in the district, even on days of inclement weather. Second area, different grade levels. We have received reports that only one pickup time is being provided at the non-public schools in the district regardless of age or grade level. The districts are not statutorily required to provide different pickup times for students who attend the same non-public school. I'm sure you recognize that children of different ages and grade levels have different schedules, as is likely the case in SESD schools. While the NCC law does not require Board of Educators to transport children attending non-public schools in all circumstances, authorities at public and non-public schools are obligated to cooperate in a reasonable manner in scheduling classes and transportation. I note that in cases where the opening and or closing times of non-public schools were not unreasonable or widely aberrant with the public school schedule, the commissioner has concluded that transportation must be provided in such a manner that the students arrive on time for the beginning of school and are not picked up until the end of their school day. After-school activities. While it's not required, school districts may offer late bus transportation to allow students to take advantage of after-school activities and programs. A school district that adopts a policy of providing new buses must apply such policy consistently and fairly to public and non-public schools alike. These are all quotes from this letter. I recognize that arranging educational services and coordinating transportation for non-public school students requires significant cooperation between educational leaders. I strongly encourage you to continue outreach upon non-public schools and parents to ensure that the appropriate statutorily mandated services are being provided by SESD. Sincerely, Renee L. Ryder. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Hi. Thank you to the board, giving me the opportunity to come here and talk. After the letter from?
If you could kindly?
My name is Simon Oliver. And here's the letter that was mailed back in September to Dr. Adams from the New York State Department of Education. After they recognize the trouble with the current district policies regarding transportation and services for children with special needs that are amended by New York State Education Department, I'd like to ask the board to meet with the school, private school administrators of the private schools and HUs and expect to change back the unlawful practices that has been in place for the last few years regarding transportation and services for special children. Each school should get reasonable transportation, which is considered a multiple arrivals and dismissals from and to school. A child deserves to stay in school to reach the maximum of his or her capabilities and shouldn't have to leave earlier because there's only an earlier dismissal. Also, any child with special needs should receive the services they deserve. I have personally met with the parents of a hearing impaired child who doesn't get the services necessary, as the parent had said to me, quote, "My daughter has missed a year of school," quote. No child and parents deserve this, and a child special with special needs should receive the help available. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to copy that?
You can hand the board any paper that you would like to. Any further comments? Seeing there are no further comments, we will close this segment. Superintendent comments?
None.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. The chair would like to state a motion to return to executive session for the purposes previously stated. Motion. Mr. McKenzie, second. Ms. Dreamer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you.